It's another great night in Pueblo, Colorado, and I'm calling to order the City Council Executive Committee meeting. Today is Monday, March 4th, 2024. For the record, Counselors Maestri and Counselor Martinez are excused. They both have good reasons not to be here. First thing on the agenda, we're going to have the oath of office to our brand spanking new city councilors, Mr. Charles Hernandez. If you want to go out in front, you'll get sworn in.
Mr. Hernandez, do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and of the state of Colorado, the Charter and ordinances of the city of Pueblo, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of the office of city councillor with the city of Pueblo, and to the best of your knowledge and ability, maintain an efficient service in the city, free from partisan distinction and control? So help you God?
So help me God.
Congratulations. Let's get you to sign a couple of things over here.
Haley, could I ask, could I ask you to take a picture with his family down here? Well, congratulations, Council Hernandez. We are more than happy to have you with us and look forward to working with you and glad you're here. Thank you. We go now to city update. Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair and Council. Just a few announcements this evening. Alyssa Parga should have sent all of you an email about next Monday evening at 5:00 PM taking your group city council photo here in chambers now that you're a full complement. So if you will plan for that. Another announcement is our city council member spotlight that our Director of Public Affairs is working on. This is just a social media spotlight on the city's page highlighting each of the council members in a positive way to reach the community and allow them to get to know you. The first one went out on Friday for Councilmember Joe Latino. And so if you have any questions about participating in that, please feel free to give the mayor's office a call. Your idea, your neighborhood committee meeting, the next meeting with the group is Thursday at March 7th at 5:30 at Pueblo Community College at the Davis Academic Building, Room AB 130, which is at the corner of Orman and Arthur. Zoom is also available for any of you who are interested. Happy to send you that link or you're welcome to attend. The location rotates based on district. Last week it was District One. Councilmember Maestri attended that. And all of city councils, of course, invited to any of the meetings. This week it's District Three that's being featured. So if you're interested in attending, you can let me know. I'm happy to send you the Zoom link or you can come in person. And then finally, before I turn it over to the mayor for a quick announcement, we have been working to fill several critical leadership vacancies in the city. The Chief of Staff position closes on Thursday, March 7th. And then the Director of Just Transitions posting closes on Monday, March 11th. So if you know of any candidates or have know of anyone interested, or maybe you're interested, feel free to go to the city's website and apply. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to the mayor who had an announcement.
Thank you, Ms. Pacheco. And I actually have a couple. This just came from our Public Works Director that the city will be hosting another free citywide cleanup. We'll be having two locations, the State Fairgrounds and the CSU Thunder Bowl in early May. It will be an eight to three event. It's always very popular. So citizens get that on your calendar. And then next, effective immediately, residents can purchase vouchers on the City Place Portal with a credit card or debit card for the Pueblo Recycle Works. You used to have to go down to Public Works to purchase those vouchers and you can now purchase them online and cut out a step. So I know that that was an ask from one of the councillors. So they were able to do that. I wanted to touch base with Councillor Gomez about your town hall that you're wanting to host for your stormwater issues. I know that my office had tried to coordinate some dates with you. And so we are hoping to get that on the books for the stormwater issues. And then today I also saw another request for another town hall regarding the needle exchange program. So if you have dates in mind that you're wanting to host those town halls, please get with Tracy and we can get those set up. And the job position closed for the city attorney last night at midnight. And so this morning I offered Carla Sykes the job position. She has been with the city for several years, very qualified to be in the position. Over the last month, she's been very helpful to the city and the city council on getting our projects done. And she, she picked up where the last attorney left off. And so I was happy to offer Ms. Sykes a job position this morning. She accepted and you will see it come across your agenda to confirm on March 11th. So congratulations, Carla. And we are happy to have you. And then I don't know if you wanted to talk a little about this deputy city attorney position that you filled because I don't think council is aware.
Yes. So in the city attorney's office, we had a vacant city deputy city attorney positions vacated by Bob Jagger. And so this week we did hire someone. We interviewed several qualified candidates, but we hired a gentleman by the name of Harley Gifford. Most recently, he worked with Pueblo West Metropolitan District and he is going to be starting hopefully as of Monday. So you'll see him at the council meeting on Monday. And we're very excited to have him as well. One other thing that I wanted to mention, I did speak with Action 22 today. Councillor Maestri had asked for a training for council. So I met with them today and I need some direction from council as to whether or not you would like to have a full day training. I think there's enough topics to cover for a full day training. So they are willing to do it all in one day, or they can split it over two days. These would be special work sessions. So they would be on Saturdays. And so I just put that out. You don't have to answer right now, but if you could just kind of give me a consensus of what you'd prefer, and then that way I can help them get that scheduled.
Yeah, I think send that out because obviously we don't have a full council here, but Saturdays for me are out of the question. So I don't know, are these so important that we have to be offsite on a Saturday? Or can they be done in a work session? I just don't know why we need to go offsite for a full day of training on, and I don't even know what it's about.
So the training will cover several different topics. It would cover home rule and what that means and what it means for Pueblo to be a home rule city. They're going to talk about the different roles of the mayor and of council, the city attorney's office. They're going to talk about leveraging your political clout with the state legislature and how that, how that works up there, how bills get passed. So you can be a better understanding of that. They're going to talk to you about how to come together, reach a consensus on some of those issues. So they have several different topics that we talked about today that I think are good. I can talk to them to see if maybe they'd be willing to do several sessions and maybe do evening sessions for a couple hours at a time. And so instead of doing one large block, they could do, like we could do a week series, you know, a month long series or something like that in the evenings for a couple of hours scheduled around either the regular, the regular meetings or on some other evening, if that's what you'd prefer. I think they're flexible and willing to do that. But it's really, just so we can get the, you know, the majority of people there. I think that's what they're looking for.
Anybody have any comments or questions on, on that? I think there's, and this is directed at both the mayor and the city attorney, because there's been a lot of questions on the your idea, your neighborhood process. You know, first of all, I signed a resolution saying that city council would be the review committee. Then we got a letter from the mayor stating that it was going to be done a different way. Then we got a press release that, that quite frankly, misquoted some charter law or some charter interpretations on, on the power of the mayor to create a committee. I just want clarification on the city ordinances. And I know you're not probably prepared for this, but I'll give you the ordinances. And then you give me clarification because they're confusing. So on section 144, says the mayor, the mayor may from time to time create a committee or committees and appoint members thereto, subject to council confirmation. You go down though, and I'm not going to read the rest of it. You go down to B and it says the city council may be by resolution, create a committee or committees to advise and make recommendations to the city council. So one's addressing the mayor, one's addressing city council. But in the section B where the mayor had, or the city council can create a, a committee or committees to advise city council. It states here, appointments to such committee may be by the mayor with or without the consent of city council. So they contradict each other. And we probably need to get that cleaned up. I'm not arguing the point of whether who can do this or who can do that. But literally, if you follow the letter of, of our ordinance, city council had every right to do what they did at the, at the meeting when they, they wanted to become the review committee. And we were told that we were going to get the, the proposals emailed to us. And we still to date, I don't know, I haven't received any. I don't know if any other councillors have received any of the proposals, but we haven't seen any of those. It was my understanding from Councillor Maestri when she went to the last meeting that there was very little input asked of city council. We were more observers than being a part of the process. So I just hope we can get that clarified and, and so we all understand how this process is going to work. And I just think it's been a gray area and nobody's asked these questions.
I will take a look at that, President Aleph, and we'll get to, get to a consensus and then we'll get it cleared up.
Thank you. We now go to the lobbyist update. Mr. Romero?
Good evening, President Aleph, Mayor Graham, and members of city council. Just a couple of updates for me, and then I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues, Ryan and Alec. Also wanted to congratulate Councillor Hernandez. I, I, I think we've met, but I know of his great work that he did when he was at the Public Utility Commission as their chief financial analyst. And so just want to say it's a privilege for us to, to represent the city of Pueblo. And also congratulations to Carla Sykes. We've already been working together on some of the resolutions, on some of the legislation that you're supporting and also on the letters of either support or opposition. So we're, we're excited to be able to work with your new city attorney. Just a couple of things from me before I turn it over to Ryan and Alec. Wanted to remind city council that on Wednesday, it's, it's Southern Colorado Manufacturers Day at the Capitol. This is mainly being put together by Evaras. It looks like a really pretty robust schedule at the Capitol. All of city council and the mayor's office are invited to participate. It starts at around nine o'clock on Wednesday. Everyone's going to meet at the basement cafeteria. There are meetings, there, there's a meeting at 9:30 with the Governor's Chief of Staff. And then at 10 o'clock, there's a meeting on both the House and Senate floor with Representative Marl Martinez and Winter. And then at 10:45, meeting with a Senate Minority Leader, Senator Paul Lundeen, and then a meeting with Senator Nick Hendrickson at 11:15, and then lunch with the chamber. And then there's a guest speaker, Megan Dollar, senior, she's the Senior Vice President of Governor, Government Affairs and Political Operations for the Colorado State Chamber. And then two o'clock, a meeting with Senator Cleve Simpson. So if you need more details for that Wednesday, Southern Colorado Manufacturers Day at the Capitol, please let us know. The other thing we were asked, President Aleph, and we'd be willing to, to give up some of our time, but Evaras, Evaras would like to come and do a presentation to city council during your work session when we do ours. Just to let you know what their priorities are and concerns are, mainly around some of the air bills that are coming through. We've talked to you about some of them and Ryan and Alec will give you a little bit more of a presentation this evening, but they asked, and obviously they would like your permission to come and, and to do a short presentation on impact to manufacturing by some of this legislation. So I'll turn it over to Ryan and Alec to talk to you about some of the priorities. And some of the requests we're getting for either support or opposition to bills. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Ryan Romero with Capital Success Group. As Gil mentioned, I think over the last couple of work sessions, we've, we've kind of broadly spoken about the air quality bills and some of the environmental bills. Tonight, I'd like to go through a couple of them. And then I'll pass it to Alec to do a few more updates. The first bill that I'm going to talk about is Senate Bill 24166. The title is Air Quality Enforcement. This is probably the highest priority for manufacturers like Evaras. As the bill is currently written, they are opposed. The legislation has two main components. The first one, it creates a system of severe mandatory minimum punishment based on an arbitrary number of aggregate violations. If a manufacturer reaches three violations, no matter how minor, in five years, a facility's air permit could be automatically reopened. Companies with trivial violations could face fines in the tens of millions of dollars, which are exponentially larger than current fines. The second component is the bill couples the punitive aggregation system with a provision that empowers any citizen to file an air quality complaint against a facility. In addition to opening the door wide for continual harassment based on the most speculative complaints, manufacturers would be required to engage in a lengthy and costly process of defending complaints against their air permits and pay the complainants' costs. According to the opponents of the bill, the ultimate effect of these two provisions is to make Colorado's air quality standards technologically unscientific and unattainable. And its penalty system is so arbitrary and unaffordable that companies will be forced to reduce operations, which will result in layoffs or move operations from Colorado entirely. The second bill, I'm going to discuss is House Bill 241338. The title of the bill is Cumulative Impacts and Environmental Justice. The two main components of this bill are, first one, to establish the Office of Environmental Justice within the Department of Public Health and Environment to oversee the development of environmental equity and cumulative impact analysis, or EECIAs, in at least two specific geographic locations in the state. The second component is the selection, the selection of communities as EECIA locations based on disproportionate environmental impacts and potential for widespread human exposure to contaminants. This is the one you might have seen. PEDCO is circulating a letter trying to get local leaders to sign on in opposition to Pueblo being designated as one of these communities. The next bill I'm going to discuss is Senate Bill 24106. The title is Right to Remedy Construction Defects. This bill is actually going to be heard tomorrow afternoon. Overall, the, the bill aims to provide clearer guidelines and procedures for initiating construction defect actions, ensuring that construction professionals have the opportunity to remedy defects before litigation. And it establishes stricter requirements for HOAs to initiate legal proceedings on behalf of unit owners. The bill addresses various aspects of construction defects, defect claims in Colorado. Most notably, the bill establishes a right to remedy for construction professionals, enabling them to address and rectify work associated with construction defect claim. The last bill for me is House Bill 241283. The title is Secretary of State Review of Municipal Campaign Finance Complaints. Under current law, all municipal campaign finance violation complaints must be filed with the clerk of the affected municipality. This bill requires a clerk to, to refer a complaint to the Secretary of State's office if the municipality does not have a campaign finance complaint ordinance and a hearing process, or if the clerk determines that the clerk's review of the complaint would create a conflict of interest for the clerk or the clerk staff. A clerk must do an administrative check to see if the complaint was filed correctly before referring it to the Secretary's of, Secretary of State's office. And now I'm going to pass it to Alec to discuss some of the bills that we have mentioned in past sessions that some of the councillors have indicated an interest in. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. So good evening to the mayor, members of council and staff. I'm going to briefly provide an update on, on some of the legislation council has expressed interest in, as well as the mayor. The first bill is House Bill 241296. This is modifications to the Colorado Open Records Act. This bill would make changes that would provide protection against vexatious requesters, individuals who are misusing Cora to harass records custodians. It provides longer timeframes for response to these kinds of requests, and it allows local governments to recoup full costs for record requests that are being conducted. The next bill is House Bill 241223, Improved Access to Childcare Assistance Program. This bill will be heard in its first committee of reference on March 12th. The bill basically overhauls the childcare assistance program in Colorado in a lot of different ways. But specifically, it simplifies the application process, allows presumptive eligibility, benefits for childcare providers and workforce, disqualifying crimes for providers and eligible activities for recipients. It also requires a cost benefit analysis for a statewide reimbursement process. The other childcare bill is House Bill 241237, Programs for the Development of Childcare Facilities. This bill is calendared for March 6th. So this week it'll be heard in committee. It basically creates three new programs aimed at addressing the development of childcare facilities and accessibilities here in the state. The programs would be created in the Department of Local Affairs. And while consulting with the Department of Early Childhood for local governments to develop these childcare facilities, including technical assistance, community planning, and the development of capital projects. The next bill is House Bill 241093, Peace Officer Provisional Certification Requirements. We've mentioned this bill, this bill actually has passed both chambers and it is awaiting the governor's signatures on his desk. The next bill that has passed through both chambers is Senate Bill 2402. This is Local Government Property Tax Credit Rebates. And this is awaiting the governor's signature as well. Lastly, we just want to bring to your attention House Concurrent Resolution 1002. This is sponsored by the Majority Leader in the House. It has strong bipartisan support. And it passed out of the House today on a vote of 59 to 5. So just a little background, in 2023, the Colorado Supreme Court ruled in People v. Smith that defendants of capital offenses are eligible to be released on bail per language in Colorado statute. So what this concurrent resolution would do is it would refer a constitutional amendment to the voters in November to exempt the right to bail for first degree murder cases when the proof is evident or the presumption is great. To approve this amendment on the constitution, it would require 55% of, of the vote. There's companion legislation that conforms to this constitutional amendment, should it pass in November. And this bill is House Bill 241225. The title is First Degree Murder Bail and Jury Selection Statute. And again, both of these have cleared the House, so they'll go over to the Senate next. With that, I'll, I'll hand it back over to council for any questions you may have.
Thank you guys for your report. Do we have any questions, Councillor Flores?
I don't have a question for our lobbyists. What I do have is a question to our city attorney. Somehow, over the last couple of meetings, we have kind of changed the process, I think, on providing resolutions or letters that we want to send to our, to the state legislature. And so I have signed two letters, one on behalf of Evaras and the, the bill that could hurt our jobs here. And the other one that I signed was the Front Range Passenger Rail Cleanup Bill. But I did those individually. And somehow, I think we need to rectify the process. It just seems like it's not as powerful as it would be if the entire city council and even the mayor, we would all join and do these letters because I, I just think it, it, it doesn't have the same kind of equal strength when it hits the person that's requested the help. And I, I don't mean for us to solve the problem tonight, but I think we really need to look at the process. We either speak with one voice as a city or we're going to, I guess we'll continue just sending individual letters, which I think are very weak. Because it, it almost begs the question on the other side, why did just one city council member sign this? And not the entire, is there, is there a fracture there? So I, I just hope that we can maybe solve that process and come up with something that we can all agree to. Thank you.
Did you, so just to respond to that briefly is you could do letters of support or we can do resolutions. Resolutions carry more weight than a letter of support. And so in talking with Gil, I talked to him earlier this week, or late last week actually, about what process city council should utilize. And so I think when you send a resolution, it should be something that the entire council feels strongly about. There's other, other things on the, the agenda that are other, um, things on the, the agenda that are going to be more likely to, um, a more applicable to a letter of support, um, because maybe they don't have direct impacts in Pueblo, but it, you just think it's a good idea. So then you can do a letter of support. A letter of support can be signed by one of you or all of you. That's really up to you. So when you do those letters of support, you can certainly circulate it to the other council members or have staff do it. So everybody has an opportunity to sign. But, um, Gil agreed that those resolutions should be really saved for those, um, for those, uh, pieces of legislature that city council really wants to have a strong voice on. And so, um, when I was drafting these resolutions, there were a couple, um, of them that I talked to, um, some of you individually about making it a letter of support rather than a resolution because it seems to make sense. Um, after talking to Gil to do that and saving those resolutions for the ones that there was a, a strong, um, feeling with. There's, it was more controversial and directly affecting Pueblo. Um, and so we have done resolutions. We did resolutions for the, the CCAP bill, the child support, childcare facilities bills, and the tax exemption for, um, child products. Those are resolutions that went up because council had talked about those in the past. Um, there was also a resolution, and these are all on for March eleventh. Um, there's also a resolution on, um, opposing the, the E E CIA. And, um, there was one, one more resolution that is escaping me right now. Um, all of those are coming up for March eleventh.
Was that the train or the, excuse me, train rail? Did you mention that?
No, that one's the, it's not for the, the rail. It is, that one was for, um, the air emissions.
Okay.
Accessory. Oh, thank you. Thank you, Scott. It was, the other one was for the accessory dwelling units.
There you go. That's right.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, and so those are the ones, and talking with Gil, we thought those were the most impactful ones directly to Pueblo. And so those got the resolutions, but certainly if you do a letter of support, you can all sign it. Um, or as many of it, of you that would like to sign it, but the resolutions should be, uh, reserved when you really want to make the, the most impact.
Yeah. Yeah. If I could add on to that, President Aleph, in, uh, uh, there is a difference between the resolution and a letter, and we really don't want the resolution just to be sort of the norm. We want the resolution to be something that really impacts Pueblo. And I'll give you one example is the cumulative, cumulative impact bill. Uh, the designation of Pueblo in that, in that particular bill or the penalty bill. Those are significant. Uh, uh, they have significant impact on, on manufacturers and Pueblo, and so we want them to have more import. And, uh, an example that, that, that Carla and I talked about was, you know, the, the bill that, uh, Representative Winter presented to you on, uh, tax credits for uh, school accessories. Uh, that's one I think that might be more uh, a, a letter, and, and you can take the form of an individual counselor, and we, we've been delivering those letters to, uh, uh, to legislators that you've, that you've signed. Uh, but, uh, but, but it could be either one, uh, uh, a council person or all of you. And if it's all of you, that also has significant, uh, uh, import, uh, that letter. So, uh, that, that's just our opinion. Whatever you decide, we'll, 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 you know, we're here uh, to do what you, you would like us to do.
I think it's very important that if a, if a certain counselor wants to make a presentation to the full city council for support on, on any of these bills, it should be brought forward and, and we should talk about it and we should bring it forward. Cause I think that the, the two letters that Counselor Flores signed, I believe everybody would have signed and uh, would have supported. So I agree with him that the process seems to be a little discombobulated. Uh, we're listening to, and rightfully so, to, uh, our lobbyists. But there are specific issues that any counselor here would be very passionate about that, uh, maybe the rest of council would like to get involved with also, and I get it if you, you don't want to just do resolution after resolution after resolution in, in opposition or in support of something, but something that's very important to us, we should get done and, and get in front of us. And so I guess what we need is how's that process going to work? Do I just, if I have something that I'm passionate about, do I just email the mayor's office and the chief of staff? And say, I really want this brought up on a, uh, at a meeting because I'm passionate about it.
One of the problems you run into with the legislation and, and Gil can speak to it too, is these bills move very quickly through committee. So I believe one of the reasons why, um, we went to letters of, of support were so that council members could get, have their voice heard in a timely manner. Cause a lot of times there isn't time to go through a work session and then present it, uh, for a resolution later. Um, so for those letters of support, if you wanted to do that, we, we can come up with a process that would work. And maybe what we need to do is during at least a legislative session, um, have an opportunity for council members to, to speak to them. And we can present the letter and you guys can review it individually and decide whether or not you want to sign and save the resolutions for, for some of the, um, the other, uh, more weightier, uh, more weighty, uh, bills that are up there. But I, we'll think about it. I'll work with the mayor's office and we'll come up with the process.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Flores, follow up.
Uh, Gil, would you say that thirteen thirty-eight needs a resolution? This is, um, you know, a really important, uh, issue. Uh, and is there time, um, to put a resolution together, uh, within the timeline of it moving through the House?
But we have that on for resolution for March eleven. That resolution has been drafted. Um, and that was drafted with the help of Gil. He provided some language for that, so that will be on the agenda for March eleven.
You, because I just signed a letter today individually, and you may, you may, uh, want to hold that. I gave it to Alyssa.
Okay.
And so you may want to hold on to that letter. And I don't mind making the presentation and the argument, but I think all of us, uh, you know, need to do our own personal homework to make sure that that's what you want to do. Uh, but I, I don't mind, uh, being the person to make a, an argument that we need to, uh, you know, that we need to save our jobs here in Pueblo. And for them to put us in the same category as Suncor in Commerce City is wrong. Uh, along with the fact that, uh, um, you know, there's, uh, so many jobs at stake here. Uh, I think it's really an important issue.
Uh, Counselor Latino?
I, I just to add to that, Dennis, I, I agree with you. You know, having attended the CML conference with the mayor and, 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 uh, Council of Maestri, and having worked in that area for thirty-five years and lived up in that area. I, I have a real strong feeling based on what I, in the composition of, of, of the CML that Pueblo's kind of looked down upon, you know, um. We have one representative in the southern part of the state who's from Alamos on the CML Executive Committee. And I did say something to the CML Executive Director. And so Gil, if there's something you can do to, to help us with this, again, this is the largest cities south of Colorado Springs going east to the Kansas border and west to the Arizona and, and, uh, Utah borders and, and, and then, and south to the New Mexico border. I, I, I'm just, it just befuddles me. Why, why?
Yeah. Well, Counselor Artino, uh, I took, uh, uh, the conversation that you and I had at the legislative breakfast on Saturday. And, uh, we're scheduling a meeting with, uh, CML, uh, this week uh, to talk to them about how they make these decisions in terms of representatives on the CML, uh, board, board and, uh, uh, other committees that impact, uh, through the, the Colorado Municipal League. And we'll, we'll come back and, uh, make a report to you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Uh, thank you very much for your report, and we look forward to hearing from you next week.
Okay. Thank you, President Aleph.
Let's move on to, uh, corrugated metal fencing ordinances. We have Ms. Wilson, Mr. Hobson.
Hey, thanks for being here.
I'm sorry. The reason that we're here is that code enforcement a while back had received numerous complaints about metal fences in some particular areas. Um, they went out, they issued notices of violation. Those property owners did not comply, so they were later issued, uh, summonses into municipal court. When those citizens came into court, they were upset with the ordinance and wanted to look at it um, to see if it would be appropriate to change it. So that's why we're here today is they, they did take some steps and they reached out to some members of council so we could open that discussion. So the city right now has two ordinances regarding fences. Um, one of them is out of Title seventeen, the zoning code. And it talks about the placement of fences. It does not regulate, um, any portion of what type of material can be used only where it's placed. This did offer us up the opportunity to find that we had an error in that code, um, when it refers to Title uh, fifteen, chapter two. It's meant to make reference to, uh, the portion of the code that regulates, um, a view, obstruction of view at intersections and things like that. So, so that will have to be amended to, to reference the proper code. The other section of code that regulates fence materials is Title eleven. It's the police code, and this is listed under nuisances. And it reads specifically, specific nuisance, nuisances, the following substances, activities, or conditions are hereby expressly deemed to be detrimental to the health or safety of the inhabitants of this city and our nuisances. The construction, installation, erection, keeping, or maintenance of a barbed wire, electrically charged, sheet metal, or corrugated fence, or fences on any property located within a residential zone district. So then we wanted to look at some other cities and see if anyone had similar ordinances. And we found, we found quite a few. Um, the city of Vada prohibits sheet metal fencing. Glenwood Springs prohibits it. Aurora prohibits it. Which then brings us to the safety reasons associated with it. So, um, of course there's sharp edges. If, if the fence isn't constructed properly, it's got sharp edges where some, you know, you get little kids walking by, they drag their hand along the fence, they can cut themselves. Um, they do rust. When you have rust, you have tetanus. Wind loads, um, we have a lot of wind here and you see the materials flapping in the wind, which also creates noise. Um, they also hold noise within a yard. So there's problems with these fences in regards to like a, a yard where maybe there's a daycare and there's a lot of loud children playing in the yard and that noise resonates off of those metal fences. The dogs barking resonates off of those metal fences and creates noise issues sometimes for neighbors. Um, there can also be glare associated with it. We had, we did handle a few years ago a complaint um, with regard to glare. Someone had a sheet metal fence and the reflection of the sun hit that right, right into their front window and caused them some problems. They couldn't even enjoy their television because the, the glare from that fence. So then we have some examples to show. These are all, um, fences that were, have been ticketed by the code enforcement unit. This fence in particular is beautiful. This gentleman did a great job. He, he framed it with wrought iron. Um, it does not have any bare or jagged edges, and he did a beautiful job. According to our code, however, still an illegal fence. Then we get to some other fences that, that weren't as well done. This one isn't real bad, but it's not as well done as that one. This fence does have jagged edges. This one isn't a great example, but it, it also has, it's, it's a okay fence, jagged edges. This one is not a very good one. This is, this is a lot of the examples that we see throughout our city when you look at and talk about metal fences. So then we need to look at potential options. One of the options is to leave the code alone and leave it as is. Um, the other is to amend the ordinance that would allow for metal fencing with upgrades. Um, that would prevent rust and erosion. They would cap it off so that there aren't sharp edges. Um, in conjunction with a possible permit process so that people have to get the, the fence and the fence design approved and make sure that it's engineered properly to withstand the wind loads. And some other examples of those fences, and I would open that for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hobson. Did you have anything?
Just that, uh, under the Title seventeen code for commercial and industrial, um, fencing, uh, metal fences are not expressly prohibited. But when we do site review of the improvements, um, the fencing materials have to be, have to match what would be an approved architectural feature on the building. And so it's pretty rare that we have corrugated metal type of materials associated with buildings that then could be used for fencing. So it's, it's not expressly prohibited, but rarely is it actually approved because of the need to be compatible with the architecture of a building.
I, I have a question. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Uh, any questions, Counselor Latino?
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to be rude.
All right.
Scott. And Karen, does this, does this, uh, pertain to businesses too?
Um, as I was explaining, for businesses, if we have a, uh, improvement to an existing building permit for, uh, an existing, uh, business or a new business, this, uh, the compatibility with the building, the fence material, that would be in play. If this is a corrugated fence, it's been at a business for a long time. There's no building permit for any improvements or expansion, then that would be something where it likely wouldn't fall under a code enforcement action.
Well, we have a problem on Goat Hill, okay? I'll be very candid about it. It's a, it's a roofing company who purchased the, 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 the site from, uh, Mackinac Plumbing some years back, few years back. And he's got a metal fence that goes all the way around the plate, all the way around the place. I mean, it's ugly and it's terrible. And it, it, according to the, what you've just expressed here, explained, he doesn't meet code at all. And, 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 and it, and it's disrespectful of the neighborhood. So I'd like for that to be looked at.
This, this code in particular, this eleven-one-four-oh-five does reference residential zone districts only. So if that is not a residential zone district, that might be a different issue. Um, and we would have to try to determine how long that fence had been there.
It, it's been there a couple of years because I was raised in that area. Okay. And I talked to the gentleman about it and I, I forget who else I talked to about it before I got involved with politics. Um, but I, I, I want something done about that. This, this community no longer is going to be just the armpit of whatever. It's just not going to happen. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Hernandez?
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of questions. So how much time did you spend out there? Kind of just driving around, uh, parts of the city, just generally? When you did your kind of review around the city?
So generally what happens is we take complaints. Those complaints come with addresses because our computer systems and everything require us to have a specific location, unless I've assigned something, someone, one of our officers, a proactive project or something. We don't just drive around to find violations. We have so many calls and so many complaints. Yeah, I, I would be, I would be irresponsible if I didn't take care of those first. And just to drive around looking for complaints, I would never find my way to the complaint I received on the phone if I did that, unfortunately. Um, so, so those complaints came in with addresses associated with them. We sent officers to go look at it. They took photographs. They issued notices of violation and the process begins.
And I suspected so because where, where I'm getting to regarding the manpower of, of, of your unit, if you will, to, uh, change the ordinance, if you will, and the opposition that that creates then to make sure that uh, all these, uh, retrofits, if you will, complied with, making sure that the ends are all so forth and so forth. So I think it goes down a, a really tough and ugly path. For the most part, I think that the pictures that I, that I saw here were, uh, and probably the exceptions where homeowners took, have a lot of pride in their, in their yards. And probably the exceptions where homeowners took, have a lot of pride in their in their yards. And they painted them so forth, uh they they blend in very well. That has to be the exception because I drive around the city a lot. All over and even adjacent to my neighborhood uh close to Parkview within a few few blocks. And what I see is really uh corrugated metal that really has been reclaimed. And I think that's going to be the preponderance of uh what is up there now. Okay, so anyway, uh that's all my questions, Mr. President.
Thank you, uh Counselor Flores.
You may have said it and I missed it, but is there a height restriction?
So the height restriction is through uh the regional building code. Um and it allows for a seven foot fence without a building permit. Anything that goes above seven feet has to have an engineered design to ensure it can stand wind loads.
Because I think some of those pictures you showed look like they were ten, twelve feet high.
Yes, some of them are.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Uh Counselor Gomez?
Yeah, commercial versus residential areas. I mean, a lot of the corrugated stuff I remember seeing is kind of reminiscent of salvage yards. That I see and are you saying that? Those folks that have those salvagers in those commercial areas, would they be required to reframe those things out and they're. Or make them at least one sheet of metal as opposed to two on on top of the other, something like that?
Uh Counselor Gomez, I think it's the the. The time in which that fence was installed. Uh because the code has been uh amended over over time. And if those fences were installed prior to the city regulation being in place, those are difficult to enforce. But if they, if they are, have been installed and they're over the seven foot limit and they weren't engineered, they didn't get building permits. And in those cases, you could probably enforce those. Or if they were installed more recently. Um then there would be a chance that those could be um required to be brought into compliance for the code.
Yeah, I understand the distinction, but I'm concerned about, are we talking about residential? Commercial, are we talking about if it's in a residential area and the neighborhoods are trying to keep their property values up? Are we talking about just commercial? Are we talking about grandfathering items? I'm not sure what you're talking about.
So I think I can answer that. This is. This was brought to our attention based on the residential requirement for those fences. And we're bringing it to your attention to get some direction from you and which direction you would like. The city to move with this, whether it be it remains the same or we make changes to that code.
Thank you.
So. Can you bring up the slide you had on on what we're looking to do? Almost.
We're getting there.
Yeah, it's kind of nice right there, actually.
There we go. So I'm I I I'm torn on this because, you know, it doesn't look the best when you put up a corrugated fence. But quite frankly, the people that put up a corrugated fence literally can't pay to put up a. Nice wooden fence or a chain link fence or or uh whatever and uh. You know, this is the best they can do and they do have a right to protect their property, to keep it enclosed, keep uh. Uh keep people out or keep their pro their their possessions inside. And and so I think that. My suggestion would be, and and what I'd like to see is that we amend it to allow for metal fencing. And I don't think that it's unreasonable to ask for the no bare edges uh. And capped with something so it looks halfway decent, but I uh. I think an ordinance suggests as you can't do it. Uh root. Creates a hardship for many families in many parts of our city that just simply cannot. Afford to put up cinder blocks and bricks or. Wood or whatever it is. So this is a an alternative and if they. Uh a few two by fours on the top uh. Things like that uh makes sense to me. So I I don't know how the rest of council feels, but that's how I'd like to see it go. Uh Counselor Latino?
I I I respectfully disagree, Councilman uh Alif, again. I was raised on Goat Hill. Y'all know where Goat Hill is, okay? Smelter. Those people were hardworking people of all classes. Now, as I refer to the the. Gentleman whose company is on that hill. That's a, that's a community neighborhood who where where he's put his business. And looks like nobody cares. Looks like the junkyard. Okay, so I I I.
Counsel, we're talking about residential.
Well, it doesn't make any difference. That's a residential area. It's a business, but it's a residential area and I'm very, very much opposed to that. And I think people that have a home, uh you know, you don't have to have a fence. But if you do have a fence, I I I don't see that metal is any more expensive than wood. I I have to say that because I've done some construction myself. So that's where I am with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, uh Counselor Gomez? Have you relied on?
Yeah, I'm just, again, I think this the distinction is between the commercial versus residential. And I think that, you know, if they were money, some of the money requirements that you're looking at. There's a time element that it can be done, you know, reasonably. Um I don't know this, again, what kind of grandfather rules we're talking about, if they are in existence right now, but. I still think it's that's the distinction that we got to look at.
Counsel Flores.
I I, you know, I can go with the the compromise here. I. It sounds to me though that whatever we do, everything that's out there right now would be grandfathered in. Am I wrong about that? And we're not, we're not going to go back now to. And identify metal fences and that they're going to have to upgrade. This is all going forward, isn't it?
I think it would be. It would be a challenge to go back and then.
Sure.
Have to uh determine in each of the cases when the fence was installed and. It was a pre or post uh when the regulations were amended and changed, so. Likely in with the case with a lot of ordinances, most ordinances, it affects. Future installations. But that's typically how we're able to be able to. Um review at the time building permits are issued, whether or not they're in compliance and we have better control under in those situations.
So the examples that you should, you you showed us today, including uh Mister uh Latino's neighbor. Uh they may very well not have to do anything.
Can, can I chime in?
Sure.
On that too. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I just wanted to correct. So under the ordinances, I'm understanding it the way that you potentially want to amend it would be for. Requiring these fences to have certain cri- criteria to them. Um if they don't meet that criteria, they're still going to be in violation of the code. So it would require the people to have these fences to go forward and fix them or otherwise they could be cited for being viol- in violation of the code. Um this is not a planning or zoning issue where it would be grandfathered in. This is a. Uh a municipal code violation, essentially a misdemeanor criminal violation. So they would still not comply. If they don't come into compliance with the code because they're not in compliance now. Um so it's not like they were in compliance now and now you're you're making something that is illegal and they're so. Then it's going to bring them into noncompliance. They are currently not in compliance. And so they have now a way to come into compliance and keep their fence, but if they don't do that, they could still be considered. Not in compliance. And um the other thing we need to clarify is we can draft an ordinance for for everybody to consider. I need to know if you'd like it to stay just to residential or if you would like this code to also be applicable to commercial. Um and I just wanted to make that clarification.
Well, I think we'd have to see the commercial. And see what it, what does it say?
Well, at this point, as Mister Hobson pointed out, the the commercial does not have a prohibition. For sheet metal fences, but through their approval process. They they don't allow them. Is that correct understanding? So through their approval process, they they don't approve sheet metal fences, but there's no prohibition. So if you wanted to make it a. A stated prohibition, then we would need to amend the code to do that. Or if you wanted to put design qualifications on it, we'd have to do that.
Any others, uh Counselor Gomez?
Are there any statistics out there in reference to the prevalence of these kind of fences? In particular neighborhoods, especially low income neighborhoods? Do we have any data on that at all?
I'm not aware of any data of that sort.
That would be key for me. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Just one last.
Counselor Hernandez.
Oh, I'm sorry. One last question, kind of a thought back to the complaints. Someone complains. And back to uh it's silver reflective. Code enforcement goes out there and it's so if we we amend this. Then are we getting into ours, the architecture of the color of what colors that fence? To be then, so that it doesn't reflect into somebody's window and they can't watch their TV, if you will.
Sure, so so again, that's that's why we're having the discussion here and now. Is to determine and to get some feedback of of what the council might might see in that. Um that is one of the drawbacks of them. That's one of the issues. That our jurisdiction and others have had with them. So it's just something to be aware of when when making those determinations and what what you would like to see in that code.
No further question.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Counselor Latino?
Thank you. Again, talk about the metal fencing. The individual who has the the business that I'm referring to, that's it's. Something else also owns a place across the street where he's taken. Metal. And blocked off the house where there was a drug bust, okay? People were living in the in the in the house across the street that he happened to own that at one time was a grocery store. Growing up, folks, there were neighborhood grocery stores and there still are a few of those. This neighborhood means a lot to me as does the east side, the lower and the upper east side. And I've had neighbors talk to me about that because I've met with the neighbors and I'm putting a committee together. To do some things as it relates to 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 our communities. You need to take a look at that as well. Um I'm I'm the kind of person. That I'm going to be very vocal and vociferous as it relates to to the communities that I represent. I was raised in this community. I spent the majority of my career, well, I spent my career in the northern part of the state in Santa Fe, New Mexico. Before going to the northern part of the state. People used to, people used to sleep on the on army cot or on an army cot. My grandfather did on the porch in the summertime. Can't do that anymore because we got a homeless situation that's out of control. We're going to try to bring that in back in 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 within light and and we've got things that need to be done. So again, I don't want to get into other areas, but this concerns me. And and again, he's got, he's got the 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 house blocked off with. Metal, metal roofing, blocking off the windows and he puts some along the fence wherever the fence used to be. Okay, on the other side of the street, which used to be the grocery store. I I know you have your hands full, but again.
If you can send us that location. Sure, if you can send us that location, we'll absolutely.
I'll give you the location. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you very much. I think that you have, you you know, I I think that there's going to be a consensus to. Bring back, bring forward a an ordinance to amend. Uh but we could have more discussion on that if we want uh.
I'm happy to to draft an ordinance. I just need a little bit of direction if you want this to also extend to commercial. Or if you want to do it at to residential only. Um in the commercial, we could amend a a couple of different ways to do it as part of the approval process specifically. Um or as an outright prohibition. Um so. It's really up to you how you want to do that, but I'm happy to bring those ordinances for the whole council to to consider.
Well, I think I heard that everybody was pretty concerned about both.
Okay.
Uh aspects of it, whether it be business or residential.
Gotcha. So we'll put together that ordinance and I'll work with with Karen and Scott to do that.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. Appreciate all you do. Uh we now move on to Catholic Charities, the Sunnyside Market. Uh Joe Domco and Anu Cal- Kylie?
Good evening. I turn your, hit your little buttons there, your, turn your mics on.
All right, we're in business.
Good evening. Are you going to be in charge of the slides, buddy?
Sure.
Awesome, thank you. Well, thank you for giving us your time and attention tonight. And yes, we're here to talk about Sunnyside Market located at twelve thirty East Eighth Street. My name is Joe Domco and I am Executive Director of Catholic Charities of Southern Colorado. For the past eighty years, we have been a cornerstone of Pueblo, engaging our most marginalized neighbors. At the point of their greatest need. As the needs have changed over the decades, so have we. We now provide over a dozen accredited evidence-based programs to stabilize, strengthen. And create opportunities for our citizens. Our our reason for existing is rooted in the social teachings of the Catholic Church, namely our abiding belief in. And commitment to the inherent dignity of each and every human being. We serve and love all people, no exceptions. It is worth noting, these teachings serve not only as the foundation of the charitable arm of the church. But were foundational in the establishment and professionalization of the field of social work itself. That is to say, we truly do live by the mandate to love our neighbor. And we bring the requisite competencies and organizational capacity to do so effectively. Next slide, please. If you could have told me two months ago that I would be sitting here this evening requesting support to run a food pantry. I probably would not have believed you. This was definitely not on our agenda or on our budget for the year. I was both surprised and concerned when in early January I received an email from the CEO of Care and Share. Indicating that they made the painful decision to cut back on services and lay off over a dozen employees. As the food bank for Southern Colorado, this news from Care and Share was rightfully alarming. As a social services agency, we at Catholic Charities are all too aware of the reality of food insecurity. And lack of access to food in our communities. You see, the majority of our programming at Catholic Charities consists of mobile teams of case managers. Engaging individuals and families in their homes, bringing. The services, resources, and deed relational ties necessary to help households stabilize, strengthen, and thrive. When I first arrived in August, amongst the first feedback I received from our case management team. Was their client's lack of access to affordable food. Families either had no access at all or food took up a disproportionate amount of their monthly income. Forcing them to make tough decisions between groceries and medication, groceries or rent, groceries or utilities. Groceries or Christmas or birthday presents for their loved ones. Next slide. This issue, this issue is particularly relevant on the east side. This is the definition, ladies and gentlemen, of a food desert. Completely enclosed by highways. And the Fountain River. With limited access to public transportation, our neighbors within this community on the east side live in a food desert. The Sunnyside Market is it. That is why when I learned in early January that Sunnyside East Side was scheduled to shut down. I immediately reached out to Nate, Care and Share's CEO. And indicated our interest in stepping up and ensuring that this critical resource of nutrition be maintained. It was simply unacceptable to us that Sunnyside should disappear. The east side has seen too many entities come and go and we cannot let it happen. The east side deserves better. We can do better. Thus initiate a sequence of events that leads us to our present moment. Next slide. On January 29th, we had our initial conference call with representatives of Care and Share. On January 31st, I reached out to our friends at United Way to explore the idea of a strategic and financial partnership. A conversation they were more than happy to have, and we earned their support. On February 2nd, we took an initial tour of the market with representatives from Care and Share, Catholic Charities, and the United Way. On February 9th, we had an initial discussion with the mayor to alert her to the problem and of our interest to address it. On February 13th, we met with Councilman Latino to discuss the problem and get his unique insight into the situation. On February 14th, we had our second tour of the market with reps from Care and Share, Catholic Charities, El Pomar. And the Rawlings Foundation. Again, earning their support. On February 21st, I met with my board of directors and received their endorsement to continue this process. We have had a handful of formal and informal phone calls and conference calls with Care and Share and various potential partners. Over the last few weeks. Tomorrow, we will be meeting with county officials. And on March 13th, we will meet with the COO of Care and Share and begin talking about the logistics. Of the transition and partnership. We are currently waiting on a lease and MOU language from Care and Share and their legal team. Obviously, one of the major challenges in this project is the extremely truncated timeline. Care and Share has informed us that they will close the doors by April 30th. That is not a lot of time, and this is a big unanticipated lift. There have been some discussions on whether to allow Sunnyside to close for a period and then reopen. But we are convicted that the negative impact this would have on the people. And the social capital established at Sunnyside. They make continuity of services critically important. Next slide, please. Other challenges, and this is of course not an exhaustive list, and I anticipate adding to that list tonight. Include funding. We have our initial startup cost of $167,000. But sustaining the operations will require our community, our total commitment. We are prepared to endure different levels of operations to build out our model and concepts. Another challenge is coordinating with other food providers and prioritizing this resource for the east side community. We are cognizant of and sensitive to, that there's a flow of people to and from different food resources throughout our community. But clearly this cannot and should not be the only option for an entire city and county. We plan to build and host a food access committee to help us navigate these waters. Consisting of various service providers and community members. To help us maximize our impact at the east side market. While simultaneously building capacity in other areas of Pueblo. As we are acutely aware, this is not the only food desert in our city and county. Self-sufficiency. Transitioning from a handout to a hand-up philosophy. We are excited to embed case managers within the market. And begin engaging customers with their whole spectrum of services. Food. Now verbally, Care and Share has committed to maintaining the market as a distribution point. At a minimum, providing a canned vegetable, a canned protein and a shelf-stable item. Additionally, Care and Share has a network of food vendors in Pueblo who support their food bank and Sunnyside Market. Verbally, they have committed to a warm handoff with these vendors, but we need to make sure. Um, and that a successful transition of these vital resources occurs. So that there's no break in local supply here in Pueblo for local Pueblo needs. And then not only must we maintain current suppliers, but we must cultivate new resources of nutritionally dense food. We intend to build out a robust food rescue network with local restaurants, food trucks and the farming community. Finally, another challenge, improving our data of those we serve. Without creating inhumane obstacles to food. We need to better understand our collective responsibility to food access, and that begins with understanding who is in line at the food bank and why. But as we better understand our people, our neighbors. Our solutions to this problem will become more effective and comprehensive. Next slide. Which leads us to here tonight. Catholic Charities of Southern Colorado is committed to the ongoing sustainable operation of the food pantry known as Sunnyside Market. At the corner of East Eighth Street and La Crosse. We are not doing this as part of a strategic, strategic growth initiative or submaster plan. I wish I was that smart. No, we are doing this to be a good neighbor because we feel a responsibility to our friends and families on the east side. At Catholic Charities, right now, in this point in time, we are blessed with the organizational capacity. To absorb this additional responsibility, this operation and the risks that come along with it. We are a faithful local community partner with a strong track record of innovative programs and strategic partnerships. And thus, we are not doing this alone. We cannot do this alone. We have led this most recent effort by rapidly engaging a variety of partners and foundations. With whom we have longstanding ties, bonds built on trust and reciprocity. And really, that is the only way this will move forward. It will succeed if we do this together. And I must say, I have been blown away by the responses we have received thus far within our community here in Pueblo. It has been both encouraging and empowering and emboldens us to take these next steps. So while we are the agency that will ultimately take responsibility, we are but one of many who will be committed to its success. By building a base of financial and strategic support. We are confident in the future of this critical resource. Next slide, please. Good neighbor market. That's what we strive to be. And, uh, yeah. Any questions?
Well, thank you very much for, uh, stepping up and doing this. Do you have anything to add?
No, I'm here just to look good.
You're good, huh? Comments, Councilwoman Flores?
You know, uh, the Sunnyside Market, uh. Uh, this council has been involved from the very beginning. And, uh, it wasn't done in a vacuum. Uh, and I, I don't know, uh, Mayor, whether you know, but it seems like we did give. A significant amount under, whether it was ARPA or during the, during the pandemic. Do you remember what that is?
I think that was before my time, Councilor. So Councilman Aliff and Councilwoman Flores, you would probably know. How much that was or what that looked like.
I don't remember the amount, but I know that we did.
Was it to purchase the piece of property as well or was it just?
The old Seal Pharmacy building on Eighth and La Crosse. But anyway, you know, so we, we've been there, uh, from the very beginning. And, uh, it's my understanding, uh, that that facility. Is going to be leased to you. They, they were looking for a nonprofit and they, they may have selected you. For $1 a year so that there's really no cost. Uh, for the building itself. Uh, so that's my first question. Is that correct?
So I have not seen anything in writing yet, but the, the, the messaging has been, yes, they are working on drafting a one-year lease. Uh, and the amount of a dollar. They're currently getting an appraisal of the facility and they intend to sell it. Uh, at the end of that lease period.
Yeah, my, my, uh, my understanding was different. My understanding is that they'll lease it. For you in perpetuity for, for a dollar a year.
That's not what I've heard.
Okay, okay. But and then second, yeah, things change all the time. And then secondly, in analyzing their financial statements. I ca, uh, they, they gave me a figure. That, uh, their expenses, which is since the building is paid off. Their expenses, uh, are about 50,000. For the one employee that they had and for the utilities and maintenance. Uh, this, this came from the director, uh. You know, because I, I spoke to them intimately about this about a month ago. So I was well aware of them. You know, wanting to, to get someone else to run it. And then they, they were forced to, they are going to be forced to lay off the one employee they have at Sunnyside Market. So I guess my last question is, what number are you guys asking us for?
So this evening, we're asking the city for $50,000 of ARPA funding. To help us get over this initial startup cost and hump. Uh, I know their figure referring to is about $48,000. That did not actually include, uh, personnel nor did include supplemental food costs. And, um, and then when we did our own rundown on utility costs of that facility, uh, reaching out to the providers, we did find some discrepancies. In those amounts for the, you know, for utilities and such. Um, other initial startup costs of ours would include, you know, carrying a truck. Or pickups and distribution. And, you know, in, in putting our IT and, uh, you know, that sort of electronic infrastructure into the building. And so you do have those initial startup costs that would happen with any transition. Um, but there were some discrepancies in the operational costs and figures they provided and the figures we came up with.
Now, isn't it true that they're going to be able to provide, uh? Continuing providing food. Uh, that obviously in their point of view is not a problem. They can furnish as much food as you guys can. Uh, you know, distribute out of Sunnyside Market. Is that not true?
My understanding, and again, this was just verbally messaged, uh, nothing in writing yet, is that they could commit to providing a canned vegetable, a canned protein and some other shelf-stable item. And then supplemental food, uh, would be up to us. Now we'd have to pay them for that supplemental food. Or we could, you know, work on our own network here locally to procure additional food items for the pantry.
Yeah, it sounds like there's still negotiations as to what, um, you know, what you're going to ultimately come up with.
Yes, yes. Again, we've seen nothing in writing as of yet, but we're trying to lay the foundation and the groundwork for our. For our funding as fast as we can. Thank you.
Council Latino?
Joe, thank you. Thank you. I've met with Joe and, and his, and his associates, uh, and, uh. I think they know where I stand. And just for information purposes. If none of you know. The Pueblo Care and Share came about because of, 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 of a Catholic nun named Sister Dominique Boshada. Who happened to call me because I have a place in Phoenix. And I know about the St. Mary's Food Bank, which is in Phoenix. And one of the, the big donating families. Of that St. Mary's Food Bank and I are very close friends. So I. Set it up for Sister Dominique to tour and to, to get the information needed. It's a great program. I was involved from the beginning here. When we were doing the Care and Share over on the east side and then up by the Steelworks Museum. And over on the, on the, uh. Northwest side. My concerns are as follows. This program is not set up for people to drive BMWs and Teslas. And, uh, $60,000 four by fours. This program is set up for people that are, that are struggling. And that's my concern. And that's what I said to the Care and Share folks when I met with them personally. I can't support something like that. I can't support people getting food that was set up for people that are struggling. And I won't support that. But I will support Mr. Domco and Catholic Charities because they have a plan. They have a plan. So that's where I am. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gomez.
Yeah, I don't mean to ask some tough questions, but I'm just curious. If, if you had staffed from 55 in the summer of 2020 to 77, the end of 23. Are we on the backside of the COVID calamity? Are we starting to ease up on that or, and you're, are you going to want to go back to the 77 staffing?
And I'm not sure I'm following the line of your question here.
If you had 55 when the, before the COVID, correct?
You're talking about our agency?
Yes, your agency says here. As a result, we expanded our program and leading to a 50% increase in staffing, 55 employees in the summer of 2020 to 77 at the end of 2023.
Okay.
So are you talking about going back up to that? Level of 77 when I think the COVID is going on the downside or am I looking at that the wrong way?
I think it's a good question. Um, you know, we have fluctuations throughout the year. As through our staffing model. Uh, primarily in the realms of our PAT and hippie programs. Designed to get cool kids, kids school ready. And those are, the hippie program especially is staffed by AmeriCorps members. And so each year we'll have a fluctuation of AmeriCorps members. Uh, you have joy in our ranks and then there's some natural attrition over the course of a year. So right now I believe our staffing, uh, roles are at, we're at 61 employees. Um. And, you know, I think we're probably up north of 70 at the beginning of the season.
I'd say so.
You know, but that seems to me to be a, an annual cycle. Again, I've, I've been here six months, so correct me if I'm wrong on it, but, um, it seems like we, you know, we. We grow at the beginning of the school year. Uh, as we build out our PAT and hippie program. And then over the course of the next nine months, you know, we do see some attrition and that, that goes back down. Uh, pre-COVID 2020 numbers. Uh, or 2019 numbers even. I, I'm, I'm not aware of the, uh, of the total staffing numbers then. But. I know that that's sort of our, our cycle at the present moment.
Grant work in reference to your organization. Are there numbers that you're going to provide us with or are you still trying to get those grants? Are you putting RFPs? I mean, where are you at with that?
Yeah, so we, um, we're applying for the Colorado Trust Initiative. And what's the amount on that? Colorado Trust? So that's a three-year initiative, uh, designed for food access and distribution. And there's two awards there, uh, each one in the neighborhood of about $355,000 for those three years.
And one more thing, in reference to. You mentioned other food pantries. How many food pantries do we have right now serving Pueblo?
I don't have an exact number. That's a good question.
Yeah, I'd like to get an answer to that if we can. I appreciate it. Thank you.
No, that's a good question. Thank you.
Yeah, Councilwoman Flores?
Uh, I don't think there's many food pantries. There's a big difference between distribution. Uh, you know, Care and Share has over 40 distribution points, but all they do. Is distribute food on certain days. So Sunnyside Market was really the first. Uh, the first, uh, neighborhood market that Karen shared implemented.
Yeah.
And I think they opened one up in Springs eventually, and then one in Alamosa, and now they're going to shut all three down. So it was, it was really an idea of the previous director. And I guess it didn't work out for them, uh. And, uh, but there is no other market like this that Care and Share distributes. This is the only one.
Um, my understanding, and I think this kind of piggybacks on the line of question from Councilman Gomez. Is that, you know, Care and Share did meet an unprecedented need. During COVID with unprecedented funding. And some of that has proven to be unsustainable. And so they are pulling back to their core competency of being that food bank. That's what the most important thing is. And I don't think we can overstate, um, the impact that they've made. Uh, on individuals and families over the last several years. And I know we're, we're grateful and excited to potentially partner with them. And ensure the successful transition of this resource on the east side.
Uh, it's definitely a need in that community. There's no question. And, uh. You know, and it's, it's also reliable in a different way in that it's opened up. You have normal business hours and normal business days. And that's the problem with the distribution that they do. It's not always predictable. When they're going to distribute food, but they have 40 other agencies, but it's not predictable. And in this area, it needs to be predictable. That they can go Monday through, I don't know, you're open Saturday morning, but. So it's, uh, it is, it is a different model and it's unique and it's really needed.
Thank you. Councilor Hernandez?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Help clarify between the memorandum here, uh, and as Councilwoman Gomez was. Referring to the 55s of employees. And the statement of expense that is in the packet here. And I'm looking at, you know, partial FTEs in here. Uh, first of all, I guess the first clarification is this is really kind of a 20-month. Look forward through December of 2025.
Correct.
So reconcile, how many, understand the 55 number of employees in the, in this email memorandum here versus. Personnel in, this is your statement of, of expenses?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Sure. Um, so I'm guessing you're referring. These are two separate projects, I guess.
Okay, that's where I was getting tripped.
Agency-wide, we have currently about 61 employees. Um, we are expecting to staff this. Um, we are expecting to staff this, um, the Good Neighbor Market with approximately one point three FTE. So a market manager, um, we're hoping to retain the current market manager that is employed there currently, just because, I mean, he has the expertise. He's been doing it. He has built the social capital. And then we'll have our operation operations director who will help to manage the facility itself. Um, you know, upkeep on I T, all that good stuff. Um, and then myself would be supervising the market manager.
Okay. So the fifty thousand request is through what timeframe you're looking to help you with? What would that provide for us? The funding and support through which period? Because your statement here goes through December of twenty twenty five.
So that funding would help to get us through this initial gap. So we're expecting, um, to have word on whether we have gotten any of these grants that we are currently applying for, um, by ju- by June, I believe. And so we will receive them in July. So there's that gap from April thirtieth to July one. We need to be, you know, we need some gap funding there.
Okay. Clarification that I need help on in the in the city's twenty twenty four budget, there is a forty thousand dollar for food project. Have any any relationship to what you do or what the city provides for the food project?
Oh, that's the, uh, that's the Pablo Food Project that used to be, um, ran out of the mayor's office and it, uh, it concludes this this month, so they are, um.
It concludes this month, Mayor?
Yep. Yeah. So they're on their own now and it's it's no, no connection.
Will there be residual funds from the forty thousand that will be unexpended?
Uh, no, I think that they took the forty thousand with them and
Okay.
Um, it's part of their budget for twenty twenty four. The the city provided forty thousand and the county provided forty thousand.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah.
I thi- I think one of the issues that, uh, this has nothing to do with their presentation, but when we do, when the city approves ARPA requests, part of the the mindset behind an ARPA request is is that we're funding something that is going to be sustainable. And it can carry on within the community. So when you make this expenditure, you're helping somebody get on their feet or continue or operate or whatever it is. And the intent was that it was vetted to be something that would be sustainable for a long time. So here we are, two years or or three and a half, four years after, um, making these expenditures to, uh, the Sunnyside Market, and it was not sustainable. It for for whatever reason, I don't know, because they're not here to tell us why it wasn't sustainable. So how do we compare how they failed? How are you going to do better than what they were doing? And then I'm really concerned about if the ARPA funds were used to purchase the building, which I'm not sure that they it was, but if it was, how does that remain an asset with them? Where it's not given back to the city to to put forward to, uh, another entity? Why would that be an asset of Karen Share? When it by all accounts, it should be an asset of the cities because it never carried through with its sustainability. So I think those are legal questions that we need to look at. We probably need to look at the agreement that we made in the ARPA requests, uh. Did it include the building? That I don't know. So I may be talking completely out of turn here. But my my concern would be is if we did use that money to purchase that building, it should not remain an asset with Karen Share. It should come back to the city where now we can move that on to the next entity, which by all accounts is going to be Catholic charities. And I'm wondering if you have that asset in the bank, do you need more money? You know, tho- those are just questions that I think we need to answer. I'm I don't expect you to answer that because we don't even have the answers to to whatever. But obviously, there's a need. There's a need in every part of our community for for food. We talked about this not too long ago. Uh, that it's it's, you know, we always forget about the west side, or we always forget about areas of the north side and areas of the south side that, uh, are also in the same boat and and, uh, you know, it's something that we need to be very cognizant of and we need be and we need to be very supportive of moving forward. But before I get behind this a hundred percent, I'd want those those questions answered. Uh, just so we can make an informed decision rather than just saying, yeah, we'll do this, whatever. But I appreciate what you do. I appreciate the fact that you're stepping up and filling a gap that, uh, is being left by uh, by, uh, Karen Share pulling out. And, uh, you know, that's admirable and quite frankly, that's what you're here for and you do a good job at it. So you should be commended for that. Uh, Counselor Latino.
Thank you. Um, you know that you have my support.
Thank you.
Um, again, my concerns are, and I'm and and I expressed my concerns to Karen Share when I visited with them. Maybe that's one of the reasons reasons they decided to back off because I said to them, you you're going to have to be more transparent about how you deal with things. And I mentioned that earlier when I when I spoke earlier that, you know, I I can't see people driving Teslas and and I don't want to get into that again. Going down there and getting food when people are struggling in that area. It it's 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 not a food desert, but to some degree it is because we have double J's on Fourth Street, which is a small market, small market. And we have Karen Share on Eighth Street. That's what we have on the lower east side, and it breaks my heart. Um, and and so, again, we need to do everything we can to support what it is that the Catholic charities is trying to do. Um, and 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 at the same time, we need to be realistic about who is and who isn't taking advantage of the good that's being done by the the market on on A Street there. So, um, that's where I am. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Gomez, did you have anything else?
Yeah, I just wanted to say in reference to, this is not directed solely to you, so please bear with me. Uh, in reference to nonprofits, in reference to good nonprofits, bad nonprofits, some are better than others. I understand all that. But I am concerned about the lack of planning in reference to an expiration date, sustainability date. When are you going to get the taxpayers some relief and say, look, we are on our own. A lot of businesses fail between three and five years. And get those injection of funds. I've had a small business. I know what it means to get money when things are down. These are the waves you go through with business. Sometimes they're good, sometimes they're bad. But at what point do we say we're trying to help everybody we can? We're a very kind neighborhood. We're very kind air. I mean, the areas that you're talking about need this. But at what point do we say we're going to sustain our operation? We're going to have a bake sale. We're going to do things for charity. We're going to do things that'll help us as well. That's what I'm looking for. That makes any sense.
We ask ourselves the same question, right? Um, there's various social enterprises that we kick around and talk about and, you know, conceivably in the next five to ten years would really like to employ. Uh, there's different models for community markets. You know, there's a cooperative model where you have different parts of the selection of foods that, you know, people buy into on a monthly rate. And they and they also have a voice and ownership in that market. So I think there's some creative things we can do. They just depend on the unique location and community you're working with. And also, again, that organizational capacity of an agency. Uh, we we are the beneficiaries of, you know, eighty years of health. And so we have an opportunity to do some things that some of our smaller partners might not be able to do. And that's why we're sitting here today. But we ask those questions all the time because we see the writing on the wall as well, you know, uh, too much dependence on public funds is dangerous. And, uh, we do a fantastic job raising money. But as a part of a slice of the pie, it's 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 it covers the gaps, right? I mean, it it helps us get across the finish line every year. But, um, those are big questions, and I think we should all be asking them.
Just because we're asking tough fiduciary questions, that's our responsibility. So we don't want to come off cold that we don't care. We're just trying to get a clear picture.
Yep.
Because we have to report back to the taxpayers that are handling this to begin with. So that's what it's worth.
Yeah, so do we.
Counselor Flores?
Uh, yes, uh, President Aliff, uh, has some. I I didn't think of that question. That is an excellent question about the investment the city made into the building, and I I want to know the answer too. But I think we can do, uh, that in concert with the process that we use for ARPA. Could you walk us through, uh, Mayor or, uh, our city attorney as to how they would access ARPA money? Because there is a process. It just doesn't come directly to us. Uh, do we still, who's who's doing the vetting with the remaining ARPA money that we have?
Yeah, so this this ask came through my office first. Um, and Julia, our ARPA coordinator, um, she did vet it and it because it's in a census tract, I do believe it qualifies. Uh, because it's in a census tract, it does qualify. Um, we've, I have the subrecipient agreement that you guys did, and I I'm not seeing anything in the agreement that says it was for the purchase of a building. Um, but I did have a question. What about the mobile food truck? Is that is that part of this too, or?
No. It's not.
Okay.
No.
Um, but it, I mean, it looks like that the it was a total of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that you guys had given Karen Share. Um, but I don't see anything in the subrecipient agreement that says that it's a building.
Lean on it.
Um, Carla can take a look at it. I'll send it over to her, but I I don't even see an address in here, so, um. But the food, the mobile food truck might have been purchased with the money. That's I haven't got that far down, but um, I'll send it to Carla and have her.
So I I think we move to that next level, uh, and answer all those questions after our, uh, city attorney has, uh, looked at all the documents. And, uh, you know, I I I think we move it forward to the next step. And I know time is of the essence here, but I think we need to move it forward.
Thank you.
At the speed of government. See you in June.
So, Counselor, would you like us to proceed in drafting and ordinance? And in the meantime, get your questions answered. Send that. And would you like to see this on the second March meeting and the and you'll have your questions answered before then?
So long as the questions are answered, I'm good with that. Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Uh, we're all good with that.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Uh, Counselor Flores?
Yes, um, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to go into executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations to receive reports on negotiations, progress and status to develop strategy and to instruct its negotiators under CRS section twenty four six four oh two, print four, print A. And the following additional details are provided for identification purposes instructing negotiators with respect to purchase, acquisition or lease of real property.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, let's go to the executive session.
Got to come back.
Yeah.
I'm going to be the longest guy in the world. I'll fight by. Oh, you got one. Oh, you started, you're not, I should. What? Well, I'm waiting to gather everyone in the middle school, and I know, I know. It usually but I actually do. Yeah, ninety days. It's not safe, city. We're done. Thank you.
Come back. Get back to your stuff.
Yeah. I'll watch your stuff. Do the job.
Okay, the executive session is concluded. Is there any other business? Say none, we're adjourned.
You can say nothing.